I'll call this meeting to order, being the City Council, being the day of October 12th, 6:00 P.M. Thank you for everyone's standing. The invocation will be done by Pastor Willie Short, Mr. Schwartz, Short? Sheerwood, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. Sheerwood, and then also followed by the pledge, and the Texas pledge by Councilmember Willis. Pastor?
Join me as we pray. Almighty God, we come to you tonight, and we recognize that you're our God. Father, we acknowledge that you are all-knowing, all-powerful, and ever-present. We thank you, Father, for those that you've placed in positions of authority in our city, God, and we ask, in the name of your son, Jesus, that you would give them safety and protection. We pray for the meeting tonight, that as it takes place, that you would be in the middle of it, that you would guide and direct, that you would give each person involved wisdom and knowledge and discernment, Father, for the right things to be discussed and the right decisions to be made. In the end, God, may everything that happens tonight honor and glorify you and your kingdom, and may it also honor the city of Odessa. We pray all of this, Father, in the name of your son and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Everybody can go be seated. I also wanted to be remiss, Pastor's gone, and I wanted to make sure that he, Pastor Wally is from New Dawn Fellowship. They wanted, I'm sorry about that, they wanted to give it a shout out. There you go. Okay, so we have some proclamations. Let me make sure that I get them all. Okay, so which one are we doing first? Okay, just wanted to make sure. So we have some proclamations we're gonna give. We want to be able to bring up code enforcement. So you're representing the entire code enforcement? You've been with us how long now? My goodness, forty-two years. That's the longest relationship you've had? I couldn't help myself on that. So, the city of Odessa proclaims, whereas code enforcement officers provide for safety, the welfare of the citizens throughout the United States, through the enforcement of local codes and ordinances facing various issues of buildings, zoning, building zoning, house, animal control, environmental, health, and life and safety. And whereas the code enforcement officers often have a challenging, demanding role, often do not receive recognition for the job that they do in improving the living and working conditions. For the residents, business of local community. Whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing and ensuring safety, preserving their property values through knowledge, application of housing zoning and nuisance codes and ordinances. And whereas code enforcement officers are called upon to provide quality customer service excellence to residents and businesses of the communities in which they serve. Whereas the American Association of Code Enforcement to recognize honors code enforcement officers, professionals, all across the United States by bringing awareness to the importance of code enforcement to the community of the United States. Now, therefore, I, Javier Hoven, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Odessa, Texas, do here proclaim October 2021 as national code and compliance. So the city of Odessa urge all citizens to join in recognition, expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by the individuals who serve our code enforcement officers within the city of Odessa, Texas. Let's give them a round of applause for a job well done, for forty-two years of dedication. You want to say a couple of words?
First, let me say thank you to our mayor and our city council, and to our city manager and city manager staff, and that's all that's gathered here. Indeed, it's a blessing to be here, to be able to serve our citizens. We're so grateful and thankful to each one of you for your continued support, and we look for many, many more years of support. We want to give a shout out to our code enforcement officers for the awesome job that they do every day. In spite of what's going on, they're still out there working, making a difference in our city, and so we say kudos to our code enforcement officers. Thank you.
After forty-two years, you deserve this to take home. We spent the house on that.
Too bad it wasn't two weeks ago. So, this is another one. This is, we want to bring up Devin Magali and Victor Wade. That's all right. We'll pretend he's here. So we have a special proclamation recognition. So, the city of Odessa wants to proclaim, whereas the teleaward honors excellence in video and television across all screens, and it's judged by leaders of the video platforms, television streaming networks, and production companies. And whereas the city of Odessa Communication Department was awarded the gold and silver in the Forty-Second Annual Tele Awards, and whereas the PPE was named gold in general social media, and documentary One Year Later was named a silver in general online. Whereas the video of the PPE was parody done at the height of COVID-19 pandemic in order to urge residents to wear masks during the Fourth of July holiday. And whereas the documentary One Year Later focused on the aftermath of the August 31st, 2019 mass shooting in Odessa, and was primary tribute, it was a primary tribute in the 2020 due to the pandemic. And whereas the city of Odessa congratulates all the hard work, dedication provided by the communications department, Devin Benavides, Magali Nieto, and Victor Wade. Now, therefore, I, Javier Hoven, by the virtue of authority vested in me, as mayor of the city of Odessa, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 12th, 2021, as the city of Odessa Tele Awards Day. In special recognition to Devin Benavides, Magali Nieto, and Victor Wade, so throughout the city, I urge all the citizens to acknowledge this communication team we've created during the unprecedented time. Congratulations. The One Year Later was an incredible, credible, very heartwarming and moving video. Ladies, congratulations. Well job done. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you to my team. We would not be able to do this without the support of our city management. I know sometimes I go to him with ideas, and he looks at me like I'm crazy, especially the PPE video, but that received such good reception and praise nationally, statewide, throughout all of our organizations that we're part of, and really kind of helped us through a hard time because it was a hard year for everyone, so this really, this really is great. And couldn't have done it without Magali. She's moved on, but we still appreciate everything that she did for our department, and her mark is lasting forever. So thank you, Magali.
That's when we realized who had dancing skills and who didn't in that video. Okay, now we move on to the next item, citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Anybody willing to comment on any, anything can do so that's not on the agenda, can do so by filling out a card, coming forward. You have three minutes to be able to express anything that you wish. You can also, you will also please provide a name for the record, and you can do so by coming forward right now. Seeing that no one's gonna come forward, we'll move on to the consent agenda, ask council to view it as presented. Also remind that any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of its agenda items before or during the consideration of the item. If council has had time to review the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve. So moved. I have a motion by Councilman Tom, Tom Sprols, and a second by Mark Mata. All in favor indicated by saying aye. All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're gonna move on to item five of the council action. Item one, consider approving the decision to work with Office Wise for the station furnishing that will be completed in the new fire stations six and nine. Mr. White?
So we did put up four bids, and as I told you all last week, the low bid was Office Wise, and it came in at seventy-four thousand, thirty-five dollars and seventy cents. I have worked hand in hand with Joanne with purchasing, so I've got her blessing, which if y'all know her is a big deal, so I hope that you guys consider this and approve this, and we can move on when we get these two stations filled up with furniture.
That was short and quick. Counsel, does anybody have any questions?
Move approval.
I have a motion by Councilman Thompson for approval as presented. Do I have a second? Councilmember Willis, all in favor indicated by saying aye. All opposed indicated by saying nay. Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
Motion passes unanimously.
You guys will be very proud of this.
We're gonna move on to item number two, consider a bid award for the North Dixie Boulevard pavement reconstruction for Forty-S sixth Street to alley north of Fifty-S sixth Street. All right, there you do, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor and Council. The bids for this project were opened on September 14th, 2021, and four responsive bids were submitted for this project. The lowest responsive bidder was J.D. King Construction from Seminole, Texas, in the amount of one million, seven hundred, seventy-one thousand, nine hundred, thirty-two dollars and six cents. Bids are within budgeted amount for this project. The purpose of this project is to reconstruct approximately thirty thousand square yard of roadway, which is approximately point seven linear miles. The project will include curb and gutter replacement, concrete valley, handicap access ram, concrete sidewalk installations. Newton Engineering, the design consultant, and city staff have reviewed the bids, and they recommend awarding the bid to J.D. King Construction in the amount of one million, seven hundred, seventy-one thousand, nine hundred, thirty-two dollars and six cents, and I'll be glad to answer to your questions.
Counsel, do we have any questions or direction? We're gonna wind up keeping the V gutter in the middle, and we're gonna get away from the crowning?
It will be the same shape. We're not changing the shape.
Any other questions? Okay, so do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember White. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Sprols, all in favor indicated by saying aye. All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. We're gonna move on to ordinances. Item three, consider approving amendment of Article Four dash seventeen game rooms, video gaming ordinance.
Mayor, I move we table this motion.
Okay, I have a motion to table item number three. Do I have a second? Second, I have a motion by Councilman Sprols to table. I have a second by Councilman Thompson. Counsel, you need a discussion? All in favor indicated by saying aye. All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item three on the council agenda is tabled for now. We do have someone that wanted to be able to speak on item three. If that person still chooses to come forward, you can do so now, and just state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So my name is Jason Hamm. I'm an attorney with the Hamm Law Group over in Midland, on Garfield Street. And I've got a client who operates a game room here in town. It's been a client for a while, and this particular client runs a very clean game room. Doesn't have the issues that I read the meeting from last week that you guys were talking about. And she came to me, and she said, you know, look, this was in the newspaper, had no idea what was going on, came to me, said, will you look at this and see if you can determine what's, if this is legal, what they're trying to do, and what's going on here. And upon looking at the red line to the ordinance amendments, there's a number of issues there that were very apparent from the face of it. Apart from just some inconsistencies and typos, there's issues, which I've actually discussed with the city attorney's office, some of which I think at this point have been kind of pulled off the table. There's very, very clear case law, there's statutes that are in conflict here, and because of that, we feel like we need to come here and voice our opinions. And so, I would caution the city council that there are, in the amended ordinance, and possibly even in the original ordinance as it currently sits, there are unconstitutional aspects of that ordinance that need to be addressed, and that, and there's case law that's very clear, there's case law that's probably nearly exactly on point with the facts of this situation as far as the distance from churches, schools, that whole aspect, which, speaking with Mr. Jones, sounds like that's, city attorney's offices realize that that was not, not able to be done at three hundred feet max there. But there's other issues that are in this amended ordinance and the current ordinance that really need to be revisited. However, I say that, my client is all for amending the ordinance and bringing in the restrictions in to try to help clean up some of the riffraff. She completely gets it. She understands the reasoning and what the city council's trying to do, and what the police department's dealing with, and things of that nature. However, one of the problems is, is we have a huge influx here lately of out-of-towners putting in game rooms in Odessa. And so, there's kind of some new elements that are not the local people here that are, you know, screwing it up for the rest of everybody, and that's, that's one of the big issues. And so, probably our biggest concern is the hours. We'd asked the city council to go back and rethink the game room ordinance against its other ordinances of similarly situated businesses, which if you look in the zoning restrictions and in some of the the other areas of the ordinance, there's other businesses that are very similar, if not, probably should be even more restricted than the game room industry, because the game rooms here don't serve alcohol. Other places they do serve alcohol, and that's a whole nother area, but, you know, pool halls, dance halls, those get stowed until 2:00 a.m. The alcoholic beverage code's still 2:00 a.m. Okay. And so I'd ask the city council to think about that, and we propose a 2:00 a.m. hour, closing 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., or 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. And if you would look at similarly situated businesses, I think it'd be clear that, for some reason, the video gaming or game rooms are being essentially singled out, kind of unfairly compared to probably some more promiscuous and more, you know, more dangerous type of businesses that are getting stowed and laid, and that are actually involving alcohol and things of that nature. So, thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item number three, consider approving amendment to Article Four dash, I'm sorry. Item number four, consider amendments to Article fourteen dash two dash two four, point four, Legend of Interpreting Schedule of Uses of Recreational Entertainment Uses, Article fourteen dash nine dash one point three Vehicle Parking Regulations. Mr. Brindley?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is related to the previous item, but what this will do is add game room definition to the zoning ordinance, and it's the same definition it is in the game room ordinance in chapter four, and it would also add the game room use to the use charts. It's not in the zoning ordinance right now, so we'd be adding that use to the use charts to show that it's in allowed use by right in lot industrial, heavy industrial zoning districts. And also to add the parking requirements for a game room, which would be thirty spaces, plus one space for every one hundred square feet of floor area above two thousand square feet total of the building area. That's not in the game room, or in the zoning ordinance at this time. And that parking requirement is the exact same parking requirement for other commercial amusement indoor uses such as a pool hall or a domino park or something like that. And be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, I ask if you want to go ahead and discuss this, or if you want to go ahead and table this item, as long as, since we are tabling item three, and bring it back at a later time as we consider item three, or we can discuss it now. Basically, this, they're, 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 let me ask you this. Is there anything as far as considering discussion this item that would be in conflict of the item that we just tabled before, which is item three? Maybe this is a legal question? Or these completely separate issues, and germane to one, to each one individually?
I think they're separate issues. They're related, but they are separate, because this issue is just adding the game room definition and actually addressing the absence of game room from the zoning ordinance.
My question, my question is here is that because of the nature of the word game room, and my question would be is, would that go back to singling out, or should the ordinance reflect facility?
Mayor, at this time, I think that we should, I would suggest that the council table this item, and let legal look at that in conjunction with the item before.
I would agree. I would one hundred percent agree with that. Since we tabled item three, I would rather prefer not to go into an in-depth discussion until we further be able to discuss item three, and then do bring this back at a later time, when council feels is appropriate to do so. So I will now consider a motion to table item four as well.
Mayor, I move that we table item four.
I have a motion by Councilman Mata to table item four as presented. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Sprols, all in favor indicated by saying aye. All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes. We are now tabled item four, that we will bring back with item three and four at a later time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to miscellaneous items. Item five, appointment of boards. City Secretary Gamalda, do we have any appointments?
We do. For the Capitol Advisory Committee, District One, the appointee was resigned, so Councilmember Mata wishes to appoint Dustin Fawcett to the board.
Okay, yeah, we want to go ahead and make the motion. So we have a motion for the Capitol Improvements Advisory Committee, District One. Do I have a motion to fill it by Dustin Fawcett?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swan. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Sprols, all in favor indicated by saying aye. All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Dustin Fawcett has been now appointed to Capitol Improvements Advisory.
Thank you, Council.
That's it? No more? Well, that was quick. We're gonna move on to item six, recess for executive session as authorized, excuse me, by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, to consult with attorneys. City Council may adjourn to executive session, discuss settlement of pre-litigation case of law, and Patricia Flores, do I have a motion? I have a motion by Councilmember Swan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember White. All in favor indicated by saying aye. All those that are not in favor indicated by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We are now in executive session, and we will be back. We are now in executive session and we will be back.
It's worked for two minutes.
Seeing that we've taken no action in executive session, do I have a motion to reconvene into general session?
So moved.
I have a motion by councilman Sprouse. Do I have a second? I have a second by councilman Thompson. All in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicated by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We are back into general session. Seeing that there is no more business before the city council, do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion to adjourn, uh, councilmember Willis. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a, uh, a motion by councilman Swan. I'm trying to get out of here. By councilman Swan, all in favor indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
We're good?
Um, may I just announce no action taken all of the...
Yes, I did.
Well, he did before the motion to come back in.
Yes, I say, saying that no, 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 no action was taken in executive session and then it's in the record. Okay. So, I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, do you can anybody say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, any can anybody say nay? Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Everybody have a safe trip home. Thank you very much for attending and being interested.
This is a record.
We earned our ten dollars, our eight dollars today.
I know it. I know it.